Lock that hex, we don't know what to do. There's a tree down across the road, it sounds like they hit the tree. And we gotta pick up stuff down there, layers up.
I remember that was highly stressed.
Didn't it, who?
In the edge.
When I turned it on.
It said, it said, "Reporting in progress."
You didn't hear it say?
Who?
I didn't hear.
I didn't hear.
I heard.
But isn't there a Dr. Seuss book, Harry, or somebody hears a who or something? His eyes are lit up. He's staring at your bed.
He's working. My car is a heat, so.
Call this meeting to order. One call.
Karen's gonna come into here.
No.
Okay. Lee?
Sure.
Charlie?
Sure.
Joan?
Peasant.
Scott?
Here.
You can forego the pledge, you don't want to forego this, or do you?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. You have anything about presenting us with the first two items for the 2023 budget?
Can we send some bad ones here? So as we go through the budget, if, and I'm just gonna put it out, if someone says, "Oh, I think we should change this to such and such," are we going to then discuss and vote on? How are we gonna handle this if people want to make changes to the budget?
I can tell you. What we usually do is if you wanna change this one line item, what I do is I mark it down, what account it is, and how much it should be.
Okay.
And then at the end, we just do it as one resolution.
Right, but what if someone says, "I wanna vote on that single line item?"
We do it all together.
It cannot be pulled out and voted on independently.
You could.
Okay, thank you.
Usually.
Then why do we wait at the end if there's something that there's some discretion about?
Right.
Saying we're gonna vote to accept, except for this, and then we're gonna have a separate vote if there's something that's.
I'm not anticipating, but I'm trying to establish these ground rules because of past experiences and going through the budget process.
Tonight.
Right, Kali D C is being here tonight.
I was hoping eight, eight thirty, but.
Eight's great.
Eight's great?
Eight thirty, okay.
I haven't had dinner.
Well, that's that way, she's no real.
I haven't had much.
So what I'd like to do tonight is go with the eight one and deep one. Dan's not gonna be here tonight. I, to catch everybody up a little bit, I attended the Highway Superintendent's County Meeting. They had a meeting today at Senate.
About the snowplow.
About the snowplow con, lack of snowplow contract.
Right.
It's, nobody's got a contract yet, we don't know when we will get a contract, there's still a lot of things that were discussed that are questioned or nobody feels comfortable with. The vast majority of all the supervisors and superintendents there feel that the best thing to do and the county, the president of the county highway superintendent was gonna draft a letter to send to the county legislature, county judges, everybody, all the towns supervisors will get a copy to share with the boards, is to go with our previous year budget, making it that into a, to continue it for a year. Because we're forty-five to sixty days from when they're gonna be plowing snow on the same roads, you know, he's got a contract. I don't feel, and I don't think a lot of the people felt it in that amount of time, that there's gonna be a contract for us to sign, nobody wants to, with all the questions in it.
Where does our county legislator stand on this?
I'm not sure. I haven't spoke to him lately on it. He was, the last I spoke to him was probably June or July, it was a hot topic. At that point, we've been to a county supervisors' meeting that we have, I believe it was May or June maybe, and Steve Fritti, I think I'm saying his name right, was the county highway superintendent, president Kane presented it. All the supervisors at that meeting had said that it looked good, we thought we'd work with it, but we wanted some provisions to that. One was a fuel surcharge, because nobody knows what the price of fuel's gonna do.
Right.
Another one was, the way it's structured, the way Brian wants to do it is, all the towns will get a blue payment upfront.
Right.
Then they'll get a second payment after the year. All the towns will have to keep track of all their miles.
Right.
All their hours, all these big formulas to do everything, and then if you went over what your initial payment was, you would get a second payment. Everybody's concerned that there's a lot of room for scrupling that by the county. If they go over budget, that they can go around and pick and say, "Well, you didn't need to plow that time, which you did, so we're not gonna pay you for it," different thing. Thing, so what all us supervisors pretty much unanimously decided was, we're good with this contract, this was imposed, I'm not gonna get into what it was, because it's type of interest, a big calculation, but we wanted a fuel surcharge, we wanted a surcharge for the salt, because the price of salt's going up and down, and the fact that whatever roads we contracted to plow, we would continue to plow for the remainder of the contracts. In other words, if we're contracting about twenty-four point one miles or whatever it is, we're gonna do that to work with the contract, that if halfway through the year we get an awful winter, the county can't come back and say, "Well, we're running short on money, so we're gonna plow some ourselves, so we're gonna take five miles from here, ten miles from there." And everybody's concerned is everybody's getting rid of the budgets, and we don't have.
Right, right.
You know, paying the budget for, and where it stands, we'd be at less money than we were last year.
Right.
This, this rock as base to start with, and, you know, the price of fuel's almost tripled, the price of salt's doubled, everything's gone up, price of labor's gone up, so. It's, they're working hard on it, and, you know, hopefully by the town board meeting we'll have a resolution. What they're asking is all the towns pass a resolution, but this is what we wanna do.
Right.
Send that to the chair of the legislature, so that they can see that everybody's pretty much unanimous of this is not happening, but we're getting presented with, or not presented with. So anyways.
Scott, do you want me to go ahead and hand them?
If you wanna hand that out here.
Okay, so I put together, with Scott's permission, a highlight overview of the budget. I hope I have enough copies, I looked enough for the town board and Lisa anyway. And the, the intent of this is, it's almost like the state of the union kind of a thing, but it's not quite the same. It's just a chance to say, so the town sterling has shown prudent spending for the taxpayers, the proposed twenty twenty-three total budget appropriations for A B D A D B, one million seven hundred sixty-eight thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars compared to the twenty twenty-two budget of blah blah blah, and that's less than a one percent increase in appropriations. In fact, it's point two six percent, twenty-six hundreds of a percent. So it's negligible, so thank you, Scott, for that. The proposed property taxes to be levied for funds A and D A are the same as this year, year twenty twenty-two. The town has a healthy fund balance, which should be helpful for any unforeseen circumstances. Fund balances, so the actual twenty twenty-one year-end fund balance or surplus. Now, a fund balance means at the end of the year, here's the money that the town has left over, and I'm just doing funds A B D A D B that are not committed to anything. And we have a healthy fund balance of two million four hundred fifty thousand three hundred nine dollars going into this year. The total anticipated fund balance for the year, for this year, twenty twenty-two, is one point six five nine eight eight zero based on the twenty twenty-two budgeted amounts. Now, this is critical right here. Typically, the fund balance is greater than anticipated, because usually during the year, the actual appropriations are typically less, and the actual revenues received are more than the budgeted amounts. So we end up actually getting a little fund balance there.
Right, do we, do we shoot for a percentage of the budget? Is what we predict should be surplus at the end of the year?
Well, we can talk about that, I don't know if there's a policy. I know, oh, the Office of State Controller says a reasonable amount, that's the adjective they use to describe the fund balance. I don't know if the town board ever established a policy on it. I know I never did. I just said, while we're, whatever we're doing, I think it's a good thing. And the following is a breakdown of the potential fund balances at the end of the year, twenty twenty-two. For the supervisor's monthly report ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, analysis of unreserved fund equity. So you can see those amounts there, and then for, for, for the budget twenty twenty-three, if you look at the second sheet, you got your cover sheet, then look at your second sheet where it says, the summary of fiscal budget by fund for twenty twenty-three, the fund balance appropriations are as follows. So if you look at that unexpendant fund balance, it says, when doing the budget, so you put down your appropriations, your expenses, and then your revenues, and if there's less revenue coming than appropriations, then you'd be using your fund balance. Pat, correct me if I say something that's misleading, if you would. Okay, thanks. Thank you, feel free to, I haven't talked this talk in years. Property tax, the twenty twenty-three budgeted total town property taxes excluding special districts and college cards back for funds A D A is six hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars, which is the same as the twenty twenty-two budget. Okay, so financially, the appropriations for those two funds has not increased. Now, this I find kind of entertaining, because people will say to us, "We pay too much in taxes, you need to cut down our town taxes." So, and Becky will support me on this, I went to my own tax bill, because I didn't have the information, so I looked at the tax rates, so this figure I came up with. Using the twenty twenty-two tax rates for town and county property taxes, which come out in January, and the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Hannibal High School ta, like, school and library tax, because that's tax, though I get, I'm in the Hannibal School District, tax rates, the town's portion of the total taxes is about eight percent. The counties is about twenty-five percent, and the schools is about sixty-five percent. So, but people kinda just lump it all together and say, "Our tax is too much, Tom, what are you gonna do?" Well, ours total about eight percent of what you're paying a year. Okay, does that make sense?
I need to look at what our town budget, our total town budget is for the year, as opposed to what.
Correct.
The schools is ten times, their budget's ten times what a town's is.
Right, but that's not what establishes the rate.
Right, no, no, but that's where the money's from. The state, the schools, we get a lot of state aid and stuff.
Right, correct, but we're still kicking out a lot of money towards the schools, right, I perceive that we are. Sales tax, this is a significant revenue stream, and typically it goes into strictly funds B and D B. The twenty twenty-three budgeted total for sales tax revenue is three hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars, and that's the same as the twenty twenty-two budget. And it's divided between two funds, V and D B, you can see the breakdown. And again, we, we, we've only received two of the sales tax checks to date. But if the next two that we get, which would typically be November and January, but we, it's.
Postdated to.
It's, it's postdated to December. We usually end up over, so if you go on page two, the sales tax, note that the twenty twenty-one budgeted sales tax revenue is total three hundred seventy thousand, that's what we budgeted. But we actually received in twenty twenty-one, five hundred seventy-four thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-six, that's an overage of two hundred four thousand one hundred eight dollars twenty-six cents. So typically, we've done that, why? Because our town's been conservative when it does its budget, just in case we get the proverbial rug pulled out from underneath our feet. Special districts, there are three fire districts, and the budgeted amount should reflect the amounts for the contracts. I did not double check that, I assume that's where those figures came from in this budget, so. There are two lighting districts, Sterling Center and Marco, so if you're new to this, S L one, S L two, you're talking about the lights in Sterling Center and in Marco, and there are three.
The light in Sterling.
The streetlights.
Is there Sterling Bailey too, or not?
Okay, I'll let, I'll let Lisa address this.
There's one light in Sterling Vale. And what they did, before I even started, is the town just pays it, because it's like twenty-five dollars a month.
They did not.
Instead of spending it.
You can't, it's a district, remember, it's a special district, so only the people that benefit from it can. And then there are three water districts, as you know, just a kind of a basic thing there. One is North Sterling, two is Sterling Vale, and three is Sterling Center. Long-term debt service, thank you, Pat provided the, with the information. So Water District number one, the bond service debt period is March eleventh, two thousand sixteen to September eleventh, two thousand fifty-four, with a total debt service of one million eight hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-four cents, with an annual debt payment of approximately forty-seven thousand six hundred. Water District two, you can see what we've got there, Water District three, that time period is January twenty twenty through twenty fifty-seven. New York State Retirement, this I just pulled off the budget through the line items, for the retirement, health insurance, once again, I just pulled off the line items. Reserves, I hope this is accurate, and I'll look for guidance from Pat and Scott. So it looks like we have three reserves with balances as follows, is it correct? We just have three, fund A, the building reserve, and.
I have to look at the balance sheet.
Okay.
I.
That, right, right, okay, well.
Is that where you got rapids without the balance sheet?
Yeah.
The statistics report?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Fund D A, equipment, I think there was, I think those must be in two CDs. Are they two different reserves, are they the same reserve in two different CDs? You know?
Some are the two different CDs, but they're only in here on the balance sheet, I don't have all this memorized.
Okay, okay. Right, so pulling what I did from that, it looked like we had just the three reserves. And reserves can, there can be a type reserve or a specific reserve, I'm pulling from my brain now from years ago. And one, when you set it up, you can just, the board can go ahead and say, "We'll set it up, it's kind of a generic one." And you don't have to have a public hearing and deal with the legal aspect until you go to use the money from the reserve. The other one, you set up, subject to public hearing, all that good stuff, and then when you go to use it, then you can just use it, you don't have to go through the public hearing process, so there are a couple of different reserves that. Anyway, a reserve basically is a committed amount of money for either a generic type, like a building reserve, that's generic, as opposed to say, to building an outhouse off the back or something. I bet you said that for anything. And then highway equipment, obviously, we, that's something to be discussed. Any questions on this? Where this information, by the way, the Office of the State Controllers, and I have documentation to back up what I just shared with you. The Office of the State Controllers has wonderful information where it takes the annual update documents, and by law, we're supposed to do an annual update document at the end of the year, Pat very nicely, I think, makes that happen, this has a ton of information. So this is for year twenty twenty-one, that's where I pulled some of the information. And I can go on the website, Controller's Office website, and I can find this, and they'll even do comparison reports for sales tax, property taxes, multi-year comparisons, which is really handy, if you have an interest in that. I know sometimes I look for patterns, especially with significant lines, anyway. Okay, questions? Thank you for letting me share that.
So. Start out, Town Board, A ten ten point one. I didn't put in thirty raises, I don't know if anybody wants.
I'm not on the Town Board, kidding me.
I just want.
So I'm just saying.
That's what usually the consensus is.
Right, so I'm just saying, I'm not escaped for.
Everybody got paid for the time and writing and stuff, we wouldn't go for it, pay everybody, so. Contractual left at three thousand. Total fourteen thousand four hundred fifteen. Town justices. I don't know what the percentage is, but they got a, three percent?
Yes, right.
Yeah, okay, three percent raise. Fourteen thousand eight hundred thirty-six. Clerk, is that three percent too?
I figured everybody's basically asking for three percent.
Same. Correct rule. Everybody?
Okay, what's important to me then? If we're saying this is good, does that mean in the future we might change it?
I'm thinking, if anybody's got any. I mean, if we have any problems or questions, either if we're good with it, leave it be, if there's any questions that we're gonna look into it or discuss it, make a note of it, and then discuss it at the next meeting. I'd like to, I think.
Discuss it with the department head.
Right, yeah, if we have, yeah, if we had a question or discrepancy, go to them and ask, you know, "This looks unreasonable, or what, can you explain this?" What I think I'd like to do tonight, I think what we usually do is if nobody really has any questions or discrepancies with it, we just call that good, and we'll go on to the next stage.
Okay.
Supervisor. Looked everything the same. Last year I did not, for this year I've not used the type this part-time position yet. I'm gonna ask Pat, I think she's gonna accept that, possibly for the rest of this year, and then going into next year. Like, does, can I appoint her, does it have to be approved by the board at the board meeting, or how is that?
I'd have to look, I think. I don't know, I'd have to look.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that.
We do it right.
That the supervisor, you can have a bookkeeper, that you can have a secretary, but if you call it a typist.
If you call it a typist.
I think she's right, yeah.
We might do that with June, that's what we called it back.
Yes.
Yep, that's what my understanding.
I just don't.
So you work at the pleasure of the supervisor, but I think it's the same thing with deputy town clerk. You appoint her, but we do it as a board.
Right, so I would say I would like to point.
Yeah, and they say yes.
This is how tight this.
Tight, so, yeah.
Yeah, how much a year, and you want that at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put it on the agenda.
Same, I did buy a printer, so we did use some of that.
Yes. You got it. No, just plug it in.
Oh, you, that's all, you really don't have to.
It's simple.
Okay, so I set up the screen, sorry.
No, what did I say?
The printer, is it a scanner printer?
Yes, oh, yes.
Okay.
And nowadays, you just pretty much plug it in and it finds it.
It finds it, yeah.
Well, that's how I did mine when it.
And that's what I did for my, because I bought one, and alls I did was hook it up, and it comes up on the website. Right. You just download it, and it finds it, and it's good, and it works with the program, the Williamson program. It did, I didn't have to do anything special. I had to get one for the court, that's gonna be a little difficult, having Scott do that, because I have no idea with the, their, it's not Williamson program, it's a, it's a state program now, so he has to physically go in and change things. I'm not gonna do it, so Scott Brown's gonna do that. Suzie got one. We all got the same printer, I ordered five of them so far, but we all have the same toner. So if Pat runs out, or he needs one.
Or.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, so, watch, right, so if she, if she needs one, she can leave me a note, "I need a cartridge," I can give it to her, and I'll order one to replace it, I don't know, you know, who's ever account is getting it, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, kudos.
Lisa, did you have a budget for Karen Thompson? Do you wanna take this back, or did you already get one for?
I did not.
You wanna get that?
Yep.
The only thing, and I wanna talk more Jonathan, about the Williamson Law Book. Cloud thing, which that wouldn't affect me, because I don't use it.
Okay, where are we now?
That's not, no, that's.
Just B.
No, 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 I'm just saying for, for myself, I don't use the Williamson Law Book.
Oh.
She, I'd like to be, would that help you at all, you could do it mobile, like from home instead of having to come in here, or you have a computer at home, do you do that with the other towns, or?
No.
I go each time, and I don't mind, because I have to take every excuse.
Right, okay.
And I, they've asked me, and it's like, no, because I don't like everything.
And with me, I have TeamViewer.
I do too, and I love that.
And I can.
So you can do, you can use that and use your computer at home.
Well, that's what I've been doing, is that, like, court stuff is catching up on that, who's doing it from the house. Most of it I can do, some of it I can't, but, but Becky, your program is kind of universal, isn't it?
I have a laptop.
Okay.
I can just take that laptop home and work from home on it.
Okay, yeah, as long as I have it.
I just wanna check it.
If I had to, or I can go home and do it from home too, if I just set it up here and give them the password, but I'm fine.
Okay.
Yeah, some things you can't do with.
I have too much.
Mostly. I have a TeamViewer account, and I go to my computer from the house. I can get, I got all the passwords and stuff, so I get on that computer. Anything on that.
I can do that. At work, I can do that from home in my laptop.
Yeah.
But my desktop, it burns up, or, we have a S drive that's, you know, access from there. That might work, probably, actually, do what's most effective, show a process, the cloud.
And you know what else I was thinking is, because I think it's this year my license expires for TeamViewer? I was gonna talk to computer up at north.
See if you get it.
See how I can, no, see how I can do it from home without, I mean, pay a subscription of some sort. I have to know the password that's on the computer, and that changes every once in a while. So if I go home, and the password changed, I can't get on the computer.
Yes, my question, with a multiple license, I know it's more expensive, but my guess is a multiple license isn't served by two digital licenses.
Correct.
It doesn't exponentially increase.
Right.
So it would be a flat increase for so many licenses instead of exponentially, it would be a better cost effective venture if we bought group licenses for the town that would allow more users as far as.
Well, that's kind of like with the Microsoft, because Suzie didn't have Microsoft three sixty. It expired or something.
It was not supported, I still had Windows. It was not supported. I still had Windows seven.
Okay.
You and I have thirteen.
You have the twenty-first century. Suzie might as well as well. It's not, it's not seven, but it's not a. Mine is pretty old. That might not hurt to look at, get everybody updated.
Lisa, my one computer has, the one that I'm working on at Leslie's old desk does not. That's the older version.
Correct, that's what I have on my computers and there was no charge.
Right.
They got smart and said, we're gonna start billing people. So we gotta license some, computer outlet north was giving me the rundown on this. And I said, hey, I said Suzie's computer needs three sixty. So we got onto. Honor was looking for a three sixty and put it on your computer, I guess.
Yeah, okay, but three sixty being we package for work, order and sell and all that.
Correct, but with. It went to the email address. And that's why we couldn't get into it, but somehow he did something and he got it and he put that onto her computer too. Because we have five licenses, I believe. So he hurried up and changed the password, so now it's the town clerk at Sterling NY dot US. And they have control over the email, so they can. If something happens, disappears, they can get in and get.
Somebody leaves.
Correct, correct, and that's the problem is Honor left and. She didn't leave password, she wouldn't give us anything.
And that's good, but now everybody's got. Alright, so budget officer left that to send you for your history. Assessors.
Yes. Well, just so I bring those little check marks, just mean that somebody submitted my question.
Yeah.
That's why.
Something that.
Does that. Actually, I think I went with fourth because I misunderstood when we were kinda kicking ideas around, so I'm actually a little higher. Because we got, Leslie's always done it by a per parcel basis. How many parcels we have within the town at a given time. And we have two thousand five hundred and ten parcels at the moment. So I mean, I can found that.
You think the per parcel rate's still about the same?
And we bring it down to fourteen forty-two, it was close to fourteen fifty.
So what do you want that figure to?
So that would bring it down to. I wasn't questioning, I'm okay with it, so if you folks want to change, but.
I'm just concerned about the furnace, everybody else.
So bring it down to thirty-six one ninety-four. And that would be per parcel or three percent?
Yes, I can do the math.
The per parcel is fourteen forty-two.
And the clerk sets, you guys are talking about sharing them?
Yes.
That showing rates for the review board as well, the clerk?
Yes. How much is that an hour for the clerk? Do you know offhand, Becky?
I bet it.
How much they didn't pay right now? Do you know offhand? I didn't bring my.
Car membership?
Well, according to, so a general position for twenty twenty-one, according to my information, was fourteen sixty-two an hour. Currently, you can't find anybody for fourteen sixty-two an hour. If you go to Taco Bell, McDonald's, they're minimum fifteen hour to sometimes seven.
Oswego, East Oswego, we drove by there yesterday, McDonald's, starting at sixteen an hour.
Sixteen.
I'm here to advocate for the clerks to make sure we don't leave, lose good qualified people to McDonald's.
And the number we came up with was fifteen sixty, which I think although it's a dollar an hour more than the previous position, still I think puts us a little behind the eight ball and makes us competitive. We've been discussing, did you have somebody in mind or currently we do not?
I have somebody in mind, but she needs it, she needs a lot more money right now and I know we can't do that.
That would have to be shared by all three offices or.
Yeah.
What are your, what are your?
What are you looking?
Part-time.
Uh, I don't think I have that. I was gonna bump them up to sixteen sixty an hour because.
A dollar more than that.
Because the town clerks are usually, deputy town clerks are usually paid more than. Because I take in three million dollars. I mean, I've got a lot there.
So you're saying they're finding, they're responsible financially.
Correct.
Of large sum of money.
Now, my understanding of this clerk of New York, what do you do as well or no? Is it shared between?
It depends on who it is, because I, I'm very cautious and very. Yeah.
So right now to figure that Becky and I laid out will represent basically one day her office, one day my office working today.
And how much did you propose? Was it sixteen something?
Fifteen sixty, it was fifteen sixty an hour, which came out to a grand total. I believe we asked for ninety-three sixty. Nine thousand three hundred and sixty, so we shared between, we shared between two offices at forty-eight seventy-five each office.
Is it fifteen sixty or sixteen sixty?
No, fifteen sixty for the general clerk. Lisa was referring to the sixteen sixty as we refer to the town clerk's assist, uh, town clerk's assistant. It's a lot of clerks.
I mean, ideally, if this person did fit Lisa's qualifications as well.
Right.
Then it would be perfect.
Oh, absolutely.
But that person you think would be, how much an hour?
Sixteen, sixteen sixty.
Are we good with paying? Their clerk the same as what you pay your deputies? If you know your deputies should pay more, they've got it.
Well, it'd be if they were in Lisa's office, they just, on their time sheet.
Correct, that's why on time sheet.
So when they're looking for you, they get the more than.
Correct. But I'm very reserved on who I have in my office.
No, I understand that. Now, do we run into over, I'm gonna say twenty hours a week seems to be the magic number for kicking in civil service.
Civil service has nothing to do with my office, it's their office.
Okay, okay, so if that person worked out and were in your office, then it would only be the other two where we're dealing with Leslie. Sorry? I don't know, you're talking about twenty hours a week. Part-time, there's a. But civil service you mentioned. Correct. They don't have a requirement on how many hours. Anybody that's appointed, anybody that's hired. Unless somebody's giving somebody some information, I don't know, but I work with Rachel up there.
Okay.
And I've never heard that, because I have to certify. Everybody's payroll twice a year, January and July. And, and I have to show them how much they've made for that pay period and year-to-date. And she did the math. All she cares about is that your hours or your hourly rates are, and.
Okay.
And we match.
I think there's a difference, you're thinking, there's a part-time classification, which would be because of a different pay rate. We have a classified, there's probably different criteria.
Probably the employee handbook.
Part-time.
It's civil service. It, it, I mean, I'm going back fifteen years, but I can remember Leslie Parsons working among the three offices. And we had to be careful to keep it under a ton, a total, I'm gonna say twenty hours a week. Pat, if that's, if that's. I've never run into that. I did. Okay, okay.
That's something we can answer, but regardless, we're gonna pay, that's not gonna.
Right. Right, it only becomes an issue because supposedly it kicks in, maybe it's the title, the stats for part-time to full-time and, but it was civil service, I had phone conversations with them about it.
They're working eight hours in John's office, Jennifer's office, eight hours.
Right.
Becky's office.
We were telling you about the thirty hours.
No.
I've never run into any of those. The only thing I know that if you're.
Right.
Point of hire, you have to go tell them, you're elected, you're done.
Yeah, I know, I, yeah, elected. No, it wasn't Leslie, it was you. Cause you worked in my office, but then the license.
I worked for twelve hours a week for Leslie and then I'd be a job. Yeah, but she doesn't count apparently because she said, so anyway, that's something you can just make sure. We, I remember having to stay under the radar with that when I was a town supervisor and dealing with civil service. And it had to do with the classification had to do with civil service. So, but maybe it's not an issue now and it'd be wonderful because.
They don't even ask me anything about yours.
Really? What that position is and make sure that.
Right, position.
Right, okay, fair enough. I just wanted to go down a place and find out, oops, we shouldn't have done that.
One, one question would be though, as you said, whatever figure you gave, you said forty-eight seventy-five would be half. I did forty-eight seventy-five as half, as you indicated, if you'll see it on my line. Yeah. You got forty-seven, Becky?
Yeah, what's that then?
I just divided. If they, with what they're saying. With what Jonathan's saying, it was fifteen sixty an hour. It'd be ninety-three, ninety-three sixty would be the total. So fourteen sixty, actually fifteen sixty.
I should be.
I have a line on that. Has a line for it.
Okay, so what do you want clerk to be?
See, they work as a.
That's all I need to know.
Are we gonna call him clerk or we have to differentiate CEO clerk and assessor clerk? Just clerk?
Right.
Yeah.
General clerk. That was based on, that was based on six hours a day, at two days a week for the ninety-three sixty. Basically, the office is open from nine to four, so in lunch. And when the building is closed for noon and lunch, so you have nine to noon, which is three hours. And then you have lunch, which is a couple of hours, and then you throw in six, fourteen hours is where that.
So they'd work like say from Tuesday to your office and Thursday, like as well, she. They're probably gonna be jumping back for, for different.
They are.
Yeah.
It was a, I think it's a great idea. It's a six hour paying day, because you give an hour for lunch each day. And that for, you know, unless you wanted to, that's seven hours. Budget next year, if they have overages, they're over.
Is there times when you would need them more, like?
Well, I put down for three hundred hours and I thought that should be plenty for my office.
And that's the forty, that's where you got the forty-seven.
Yeah, three hundred hours.
Okay, so.
We wanna leave that the forty-seven one then.
Okay, so.
And they're gonna take a day off here, there, where.
Yeah, and then holidays and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I did mine for fifty weeks a year, not fifty-two.
Okay.
Could figure they would be gone two.
Right, and that's at fifteen sixty an hour, right?
Okay, so is the figure for the A one three five five point one one clerk assessor is gonna be how much? Four thousand seven.
Four thousand seven hundred.
You're gonna leave it? Okay, that's all I needed to know. I just, I'm making sure.
I have the forty-seven.
Okay.
Same exact number.
Right, okay.
That's just what I wanted to add. I'm looking at the wrong line. You guys, what happened? I'm looking at the equipment line. That's why I'm looking at the assessor. Alright, everything else? Looked good, everybody? Town clerk? Fourteen ten point one.
I think I did the same percentage as everybody else.
Okay.
Is that three percent?
I don't know, off the top of my head, I don't have my little calculator.
Becky, one thing I wanted to ask, some of these town numbers where there's no activity, there hasn't been any activity, because I'd like to start cleaning up the ones that just are there, it's just.
Yeah, I can't blame you there. So the revale though, I.
Well, I get that, but the, maybe the thirteen fifty-five point one R. And then you have.
That's a reserve.
I know, so.
Well, Joan had thoughts on that before.
I talked to Pat about it. And I thought we had a revale reserve set up at one time, but when I talked to Becky, Becky, you said what you did is kind of spread it over.
Well, that's what Randy Lawrence did with Leslie.
Right, right.
Just took that amount and amortized it over a few years.
Right.
You know, we're gonna have to talk reassessment here in another couple of years.
Okay, so that's good information.
So this rate, yours would stay the same or it would go during those years?
It would go, this is reassessment, it's just.
Yours, Lisa, is four percent.
I do not need three revale counts.
I don't understand. I want it staying with everybody else.
Thanks.
It is three percent.
Three percent?
I don't have, I don't have my pen, couple.
Yeah, right now it looks like it's four percent.
And they said we'll change it to three percent like everybody else, but I didn't know.
I put down four as well, hoping to be two. Okay, you can give me two, so, you know, so I'm good with three. So three percent would be forty-one, three sixty, seventy, ninety, so forty-one, three sixty-eight. Probably if everybody else put four, it'd been easier to change the other two to four instead of everybody to three. A fourteen ten point one. That's the same with your clerks? Use the same figure in the document?
I did three hundred and fifty hours at sixteen sixty. And then I kept the equipment the same. I'm gonna need a new chair because that's starting to. Have real things with it.
Oh, do you think we need a couple of new chairs in the meeting room?
I think.
When Charlie's going, oh goodness.
We haven't had a necessary. Let's wait till the end of the year. Equipment, got that contractual, I increased that for a couple of reasons. Postage is going up again. I have not increased it in a couple of years and. After twelve years of the town of Sterling not paying for me to go to conference, you're gonna have to start paying now.
I didn't pay for it because you were.
Because I went through the ranks and it was all paid for.
Okay.
So, sorry.
Attorney. Last year we budgeted thirty-five thousand, we're at thirty-eight, three sixty-nine now. I don't know, the year before we were seventeen, we upped it to thirty-five because we thought we need a lot more with everything that was going on. We. And I don't know what we do for next year, if we think that by then things will settle down.
Getting lawsuits.
Raise it.
I put it at forty.
Think forty's good or?
More?
I don't know.
I would say at least forty.
I would, that's what I was thinking, forty or forty-five.
Right.
Around easy figure.
Yeah. Forty?
Forty's fine, I think.
Forty, okay.
Get people to behave. Certain couple.
Just be mindful, everybody, you might think everybody's a little guilty of it, but just to call cabinet. No, we need to, and I'm just guilty too. You know, we've done well with Aspen Association towns and they're free service, or not free, but we're already paying for it. So a lot of times we get, we get advice.
Excellent advice. Right, it's just advice, they're not going to give us guidance.
And this, this is, this thirty-five thousand isn't because we're calling and asking, this is other major things, but.
Lawsuit.
Just something to be, you know, mindful of.
Alright, yeah, I'd say.
Forty thousand, everybody's good with that?
Yep.
It was good.
Elections.
I increased that to two hundred hours just because, and I have a feeling we might be over budget this year because we have. Because of the extra election, the extra election.
So there you need point one.
Yes, you can get rid of point one because we no longer.
Yeah, that's right. Did you remove any of the other lines? Well, if you did, you'll.
Sure, yeah.
We have.
I haven't told about asking.
I know, I am.
Records management.
Again, I don't know if that was.
It looks like three percent would be eleven sixty-four, eleven sixty-five. It looks like three percent would be eleven sixty-four, eleven sixty-five, or leave it.
What, the eleven sixty-five?
I'm going with eleven seventy-five and that's gonna be four percent instead of three percent, but it's ten hours, so.
I'm okay with that.
Eleven seventy-five, leave it. That's what was the same.
Yeah, I meant, I just put that there just in case something is needed in the back.
Everybody good? Public works. We haven't used that this year, um. I don't know what's gonna happen with the. With the village backing out, with the contract with the water, if there comes a point where we want somebody that works directly for the town. It's kind of a. Public works person.
Would that be a department of public works or am I confused?
I, well, I'm just.
Again.
I guess we gotta decide, are we gonna contract the whole thing out or is there a need to have somebody? I would, my thoughts would be, I, you know, my thoughts would be a publics work person would be in charge of monitoring the stormwater. Working with water. We, I mean, we used to pay the highway superintendent, that, I mean, I don't know, do we leave it in there or we?
Is it?
Say it's a highway.
I, I need to understand, is this based on having a department of public works?
No, I, well. I think, did we get it told because we had a publics works administrator, but we didn't have a public works department.
Correct.
It wasn't civil service.
It's a local law, but it fell on deaf ears.
So we would have to.
And nobody would listen.
We would have to create a DPW.
Yes, and that's a huge expense right there. I mean.
We did create a superintendent.
If you pay a company, you did create a superintendent of public.
Superintendent of public works.
The civil service would create that.
We don't have a public works department.
Yeah, I need to turn my brain around with that, with that, before I say.
Civil service says, yeah, you can have that.
Right.
But town law says you have to do a, a local law and it has to follow these guidelines. I mean, I understand that civil service says, sure, yeah, you can do that, but town law, you, it. But you gotta think about it, they're gonna have to have their own equipment, they're gonna have to have their own vehicle, they're gonna have to have. You know, you might wanna think about contracting with. Cuba County.
Right. But what my thought was is. Now that we've got the stormwater drain system, we're gonna have the water districts. And I'm not, I'm not an advocate for it, I just, we have that position, is that something that Dan said that he does?
W. That's a DPW, we're there.
Right.
I need to understand that before I can really make any kind of commitment. Not to mention, aren't you talking about special districts?
It could be, just have a worker that does that stuff instead of having a department, now have a DPW.
Then you can't call.
No, but I'm just saying, we do, I'm thinking we just ought to exit out and not budget for it. If we're not using it, we don't have a DPW, we shouldn't have. DPW. I want everybody else.
But it sounds like you think there is a need to have someone active in that, Scott, is that what I heard you say?
I'm not saying I think there's a need for it, I'm saying, is there, I'm asking the question, is there, can anybody think of a reason? That would be my only thought.
I don't have enough information to make that just.
DPW. Take it out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then part.
Yeah, because you mentioned about.
That's what we did, but, yeah, I just, I don't wanna take it out and then.
And Scott, I heard you mention about overseeing a district?
The, because we have the stormwater.
Water district, but can we do that if?
It's gotta be a special district.
Wouldn't that come from the special districts?
If you had a DPW, you couldn't pay the DPW from the special district, you couldn't pay them out of anyone, but you could pay them out of. You break it down and pay them out of.
Right.
SW.
But if you create a DPW, then they have to have a car, they have, or truck.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm currently doing it now.
Nobody.
Nobody, I live in Kew, the towns, but yeah, the issue with the sewer, in that township.
Well, Cuba County Sewer Water does a sewer. And over on West Bay Road, what, two houses there are, yeah.
Right.
They do the sewer, the highway department's doing the stormwater. Okay, but, let's go on.
I would, you know what, I would also look for inputs from you, sort of beyond that.
Yeah, he's, he's stated he doesn't want anything to do with, I mean, he's done, he's good with doing the.
Now.
Stormwater, but he doesn't want anything to do with water.
I'm not suggesting that he would take on the role, I'm saying, I'm sure he's done his homework. And if this were mentioned, he could give some additional insight into it, that would be my thought on that. Meanwhile, I don't have enough information, so I'd say, yeah, delete it then. Apparently, we don't have a legal.
We'll last stand that, question we have, passed to him.
Okay.
Charlie out of here by eight thirty. Um, operations of buildings, um. Personnel services that went down.
Standing.
Is that ready to end it, okay?
If I didn't, I just left everything. Somebody knows.
Okay, so I have, no, I have something on this one, I'm sorry, but.
Operations of buildings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sixteen twenty point one?
Sixteen twenty point four one, and I said this before, what do we need at the museum that would cost fifteen thousand dollars? I know two years ago, we had the windows and stuff like that, this year we had.
Yeah, yeah.
What was this year?
Painting?
Painted this year.
Painted this year.
And the last, and the year before was the roof.
The roof, that's right, I knew it was something.
And now, we're gonna have to remove some trees over there.
Okay, how much is that gonna cost?
I got a price today of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars, that's from one contractor who's doing Greg King's tree over there. There's five trees over there and they're huge.
Where are they in respect to where we are?
They're just inside the town line.
Are we at the Sterling Historical Museum, the museum? I understand that, Lee, so, and I'm just trying to understand where the trees are.
Around the other side of schoolhouse.
Around the headroom.
And they go back.
Okay.
Now they go back.
Okay, so there, is, is, is that where the schoolhouse is, next to the schoolhouse?
Yes, well, there's, well, no.
Like right next door to it?
Back of the schoolhouse, the schoolhouse is here in the trees, one starts here, 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 and here.
Have you talked to the highway department?
I have.
And?
And he.
Said no?
No, he said maybe this fall, they, I don't know, he said maybe they could get it, but you gotta have a boom truck get them down. You gotta be up there in the tree and cut them down. Go them down.
Fifteen thousand, that three thousand dollars tree sounds like a lot.
Quite a money.
But they have to carry, if you're gonna insure it, it must, it's all gotta be prevailing weight as well.
So if you have somebody from the town of Sterling doing it, if they can do it.
They're big trees.
I would defer to Dan saying what he thought.
We need to have a yayer name.
Yeah, Kurt would be, Kurt would help.
You said, we didn't say that.
Look at, see, way the lane and all that stuff.
I, there's no danger of hitting the building.
And if you have somebody on the payload or pushing that tree towards a certain way.
Look at these trees, they're huge.
I can't, it's dark.
And their limbs are hanging out there a long ways. They used to cut the trees for the town, well, I dumped some trees bigger than this table. I know, but.
Okay, I think what we're discussing is, do we leave the fifteen thousand?
Skip it.
I said, leave the.
Skip it for now.
There's a couple that put it down.
The fifteen.
One back, first out.
Skip it for now until Dan's here.
But the other five, you gotta take them down piece by piece, none by none.
Um. Bringing the mail, I'm guessing again, that's because. A sixteen, seventy point four?
Yes. That's a, that's a, the mail meter, that's a copy paper. Uh, hold on, sixteen twenty point four. Okay, um.
So copy of paper.
Yeah.
Or even everybody shares.
You're right. And computer, I upped that quite a bit.
They were already over sixteen hundred now. That's where emails, all that stuff.
Correct, and today he came up to show me this and then he had Susie's, then she, he was here for. But I'll tell you, it's been great having them because you can just call them up and they could get on your computer and just do it, or they have to commit.
Now, which company is that?
The computer outlet north.
We're good people.
And it's, we go, east, um, yeah, yes.
Yeah, good people.
Good, special items, Nimer.
I, they told me, so I don't have figures in that, I mean, they're so big, so they, I worked at twelve percent.
These are the same.
No, these are going up.
I didn't know.
Are they?
Uh, eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred?
Yep. So that is a.
Taxes and assessments on property.
I just thought.
Thousand.
Yep.
The other general support, grant rating.
That's probably one you could give up.
Where's Tobacada?
That, that account, or no, eight, A eight, something like that.
Okay.
Do we use time?
We should.
Thirty point four.
I think they're on retention, right?
Yeah. I called last week, which I've discussed, but I got a call.
Toma?
Yeah.
Well, that's inherited because I didn't know that they're really used, I think we have it on routine.
We didn't use them for four years.
Okay.
Um, contingent account?
Do you also understand what a contingent account is in the Acon? That's if we run low on the, um, I'll make it up to, um, computer maintenance.
Yeah.
If we run low, by two thousand, we can move money from A nineteen ninety point four, the contingent account, to eighteen sixty point four. So it's like the, the fund that you can easily manipulate, and the Acon's the only one that does it, I don't think it's in any of the.
You can go within the B account. Like it's just.
But it's not a contingent, I'm saying that line I've been.
Correct.
Specifically contingent, only. Sorry?
Little slosh fund.
Yeah.
Right, like pushing. I didn't hear what you said, pushing, right, right.
You were quiet.
Um, that's good. Public. Oh, public. Public safety. Seventy-three, thirteen. Is that hourly, yearly, salary?
Always salary. Constable, right?
Mm-hmm. Is that three percent?
I don't know.
No, I got, I got two percent.
It's three. Yeah, I got to be percent.
Traffic control.
That's highway.
Yeah.
Looks like you went a little over. Dog control over there.
Yeah, I love that, the same, I'm not gonna do enumeration or anything. I'm gonna skip, this is all. Highway, highway garage, street lighting.
Street lighting.
Well, I would wanna ask, even though Dan's not here, A fifty, ten point one, it says didn't enter, and that.
Reason because he says it's up to the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of his reports and worksheets, I think, came back with nothing on it, only notes here.
We, um.
He wrote me a lot of notes.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, that's something we can discuss with him, but I think probably the three percent of this. So, street lighting. You should be good at four fifty. Veteran services, six hundred. Did we, why don't we pay that out?
Usually at the end of the year, or if they ask early, then I.
Do they bill us for that stuff when?
Usually at the end of the year.
Okay.
Between half and I, we go through it, the budget and say, oh, we gotta pay SCAPAN for. But.
I didn't know if that was something I was, did automatically that I was supposed to remember or we just.
No, no, we usually wait till the end of the year, unless they ask.
SCAPAN. Same.
So do you need?
Renovation.
Seven, seven, two point four as well, it's four one, four zero.
Yes, point four can go away.
For where?
Uh, six, seven, seven, two point four at the top of the page. Pat's gonna take that off. And SCAPAN has been paid two thousand dollars since two thousand sixteen.
Do they ask for something or is that a voluntary?
No, they, they're saying, please send us something.
Are they thinking we should raise it or?
It's up to the board.
Do they provide documentation of how, how often it's utilized?
No.
I, I mean, I see it, I don't know.
See, I don't offer that.
Oh, I see, as long as.
I would say.
Oh, yeah, it is.
I would propose twenty-five hundred.
Sure.
Small inquiries. Um, recreation, is that Frank?
Yes.
He did ask about, not, he didn't come right out and ask, but he said anything more we could do for them would be appreciated with the price of gas or fuel and everything, um. I had made a note here, we, we had thirty-five, um, I made a note for four thousand, everybody'd be good with giving them another five hundred. He said the bill is giving them another five hundred, so. Four thousand or.
Obviously, we get reports on it regularly.
I think we gotta run for entertainment.
Yeah, and so we get a sense of the numbers that are benefiting from it. Where it's tough when the SCAPAN, it's like, okay, does someone ever see it? Yep, okay, well.
Their last, their last trip they went on, I was leaving the town hall, they were all loading up, so it went over, Frank and the bus driver, I understand, and I told the bus driver. I says, I bet you by the time you get to Rocket Lake, you could probably get a collection and make a little bit of side money if you left Frank up there. And oh, he laughed, Frank laughed, he goes, oh, I'm gonna tell them you said that.
Yeah, that's true.
Um.
And meals. Meals has been a thousand dollars since two thousand seventeen.
Cause I got a letter from them wanting five hundred.
They wanted nine hundred and something, right?
And all this one was five hundred.
I knew it was lost.
Increase, oh, there.
Well, they wanted, um, contribution in the amount of five hundred, but I'm good with giving them a thousand.
Oh, I'll give them a thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's staying the same.
All right. Hope you can take care of. They just give them the start stop at the top of the hall.
Um. Playground, basketball courts.
I don't think there's anything needed right now.
Okay, I would just make sure we stay on top of.
I wouldn't think we stay, we leave the thing in there and I'd like to, I mean, this is a passion of mine, I think I'd like to see them sometimes, maybe if we could get some sort of grant or something and maybe help clean that up down there, around there a little bit. It seems to be getting used a lot more.
The basketball court area itself or the surrounding area?
I'm thinking the surrounding area.
Okay, I had them do it when I was supervisor, asked Lisa about it, they went down and the sheriff's inmates.
Okay.
Went down and cleared it, and I think only one had to go to the hospital with poison ninety.
Okay.
Um, but, yeah.
But is that, is that, I mean, that's.
We can check and see if they're working on the, because I'm thinking they are doing, um, I saw a crew or Paul, we talked about it and they're starting to get that.
At one point I thought all that should pour down because no one uses it, but. Especially during COVID, it looks like it's getting used a lot.
Virch Malka says he really appreciates it and it gets you to lots of love from the local kids.
As long as it's getting used.
The kids like to go bang baskets.
They just don't want lights on it.
Right, okay.
That's the only thing the neighbors want it, no lights, and it's like.
Right, no.
Maybe this swing out here oughta be moved down, because it doesn't get used up.
Yeah, we could, that's what I'm thinking. There's all sorts of playground equipment grants and stuff like that.
Right.
Some point in the future, maybe that's something we ought to look at, if we could develop that as a playground area.
Right, should we wait till Dan can confirm that everything's okay right now, or do you wanna?
For the playground.
Yeah.
We can ask him about that.
Yeah, okay.
Do you ever see Virg, excuse me, do you ever see Virg not do stuff today? Oh, okay, because he's, he's the one that would be the best source of.
Yeah.
And he, I think I talked to him just a month or so about it, sounded like, yeah, he is. But I wanna make sure we keep that up, he kept it up to date. Keep in mind that there's a bench there and it's dedicated to Waldron's, one of the Waldron boys was Mojer, Mojer, sorry. Right, thank you. I'm in the right family, I'm close, the O'Powers, I just have to sort through. So, well, it is.
No, I know.
Right, you know, but anyway, so it's Luz's brother that was killed, and so that we had a dedication on that, so it's important that we keep that up, and again, it's according to Virg, it's being utilized. Thank you for listening.
Let's take out that contractual of A third, seventy-three ten point four, you can take that off, and Christmas.
What?
Sorry, we can't.
So I'm paying to the Fairhaven Register, Sterling cancels Christmas, you know, off the budget.
Just the same.
Justin. We're cutting back really heavily.
No, because we kept canceling because of COVID.
Are we gonna start that up again?
Oh, I'd love to.
Christmas or Easter.
Easter.
Oh, you're down to Easter.
Yeah, we're gonna take out Christmas on the contractual.
Is that, what you're gonna keep Easter?
We're gonna keep.
The seven hundred you must have put in there, so.
Yeah.
Well, you're correct. Hannibal. They sent us a bill this year, they haven't seen anything.
I haven't seen anything.
Do they ever send a thank you?
Did they?
Do they ever? Have they ever?
Who's in charge of Hannibal Rock?
I have no.
Carl Emmens? I think it was Carl.
I had heard that name, but that was a few years ago, so.
And I have no idea of Road Street, but.
Last year, there, whoever was in contact with me. I haven't heard anything this year.
Oh, Lloyd Haskins used to be involved with it, but he's probably one of the.
Lloyd Haskins?
Yeah.
He's with Kewa County Youth.
Right.
He's still there.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, he's there. He also does a science council, that's how I know.
Right, okay.
I would think. We've done both the same.
I would, I would leave him.
Historian.
Oh, oh, and she's here.
Is that three percent? Okay.
She deserves more.
Yes.
Uh. Equipment, let's talk about equipment for her.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm stepping on your toes.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure about her computer. Uh, that's holding up.
Well, now, just getting to see how Windows three six is available.
Okay, cause everybody else, most everybody else is five hundred dollars.
For a computer?
Yours is a thousand, the judge's is a thousand, just.
Oh, just for the.
Equipment. Everybody else is five hundred. She's got two fifty there.
I'm good with.
Oh, that hurts to me. You've gotta have a right equipment to work with.
Can she get a computer for five hundred, or?
Well, I'm getting, I'm using my, oh, maybe she started. I'm using mine this year for half of my.
You mean your personal one?
No, she's getting a printer.
Okay.
And we're taking two fifty out of her point two account, and then the balance taken out of her equipment fund, so that she doesn't go minus.
I don't have a problem with, you probably have the tools to work with, Susie, so what would it cost to get a tool where you feel like it's gonna last you a few years?
We got the laptop computer outlet north that was used because it was, you know, on.
What? Whatever happened to Brian's old laptop, is that worth?
I've got it.
Is it worth? Anything, or no?
It's, it's, it's a little slow.
Yeah.
And I just, what would it take to, to get a good computer for Susan?
Mine's all right for now.
You sure?
Yeah. I would say let's increase it.
To five hundred?
Increase it to five hundred.
Yeah.
Okay. So her point two equipment is five hundred now.
And, and all of you agree with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Jonathan, it has a point.
No, I, I don't need to interrupt, I didn't wanna jump ahead, but the reason I'm contacting Tomo is, I'm gonna, I would like to go to a mobile workstation and find a grant, cause I want, I thought they take the office to a mobile workstation to possibly use the office.
Right.
If that ever transpires, or computer equipment while I'm setting it, it could be used by the store in the office, if we can, as I'm saying, pass something along.
Right.
Could replace what I use in there.
What kind of grant do you anticipate?
I don't know, I talked to them last week, they had some grant, public safety grants.
Okay.
Basically.
Okay.
Um, I talked to them last week, and they were, they had some deadlines, but they have August, so they just called back after the first.
Okay.
See, they're, hopefully they'll get an answer for you, if there is something prior to the budget process about that, see if there's public safety grants available.
Right.
You know, cover like fire inspection grants.
Right.
Enforcement.
Right.
Maybe not specifically for corn enforcement, but in the umbrella of it, cover all for the office.
Fair enough, okay, so meanwhile, we'll up at the five hundred, just a, some kind of a social.
Do you think a hundred dollars extra is enough, or?
It's hard to. I know my phone's so expensive.
I know, but it's a lot less than what it was, because we now split, and it's usually about forty dollars a month.
But I hate to have everyone take my phone calls too, and write it off.
So the contractual is basically your phone, is that what?
Phone's postage.
Okay.
Uh, if she wants the frames for, for stuff.
I would.
Two thousand.
Going to two thousand?
I would.
That's what I was thinking.
Two thousand, there you go. Well, we don't wanna lose people.
And then.
Great jobs.
If you had to, if she did leave it to people or something, and there's some law that I can take that and transfer. All right. Boy, Susie, you look out for good.
I did, and I won't have to spend more, tons of money on ink anymore because it's a toner.
That's okay, because recently canceled Christmas. I know. Susie's only pushing Christmas this year. Historical property, railway building.
You can take that one off.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait, I was gonna.
Wait a minute.
Question, can we expand the wifi out there so we can put some cameras over there?
Okay, let's talk a little bit about this, cause I've been thinking, the woman that came up missing.
Yeah.
Okay. Bonney Multiplex came and got the video from Dan's play. They didn't have control over the one here. The video here, because the court put it in, and so I called Scott, I said, hey, the detective's coming today, I said, let's see if we can extract that video, so he came in, and for some reason, the video was off. So.
Probably the power went out that didn't renew.
Yeah, so if, we could still view the, the grounds and everything, but it never saved it, it never recorded it. So, and with this woman missing, I thought, you know. Like Computer Outlet North, a third party should be able to control this, not, not us. Because if something happens again, and somebody gets kidnapped out here or something, at least they can get the video.
Are there's hardware in or what?
I have no idea, Scott Brown put it in, I think he did.
No, I didn't, I didn't bother with multiple. Something like a.
I have no idea.
If they did this, then they could, you know, just have this building and make sure that.
Correct. But are you looking for wifi for computers, so?
No.
You're just thinking like. For cameras, where do you want cameras?
On the caboose, the, the schoolhouse, out there.
Okay.
I mean, more the caboose, because that's hard to block it out, well, the schoolhouse too, I mean, they get something picking.
Yeah, you oughta have cameras upstairs, too.
Yeah, should have had that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we don't let people out there. We don't lift them up there, you know, without somebody there.
Oh, I know, but.
I know.
Who's your wifi carrying here, Frontier or Spectre? And that's something that computer, see, we would have to get Bonney Multiplex for the video.
I talked to him down there the other day, and David sat to come on here, David's telling me, and he could probably.
Dave McCann? Dave McCann, if only multiplex?
No.
Oh, Computer Outlet North. Okay.
It might be worth asking them if they had a.
But are you looking for just cameras that will, motion detectors that will trigger to let, because at our house, I have our law.
I know, because.
And I have cameras. Correct.
There's no wifi.
Spectre, well, that's a good start, because Frontier doesn't.
I, so what I think I'll do is I'll contact, actually, I'm up to my eyeballs in stuff, can you contact Bonney Multiplex? I'll give you the password to get to talk to them, because you need a special password, and tell them what you wanna do, have somebody come out, and you say, I want one here, 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 here.
Are you thinking the same thing?
Excuse me?
Are you thinking the same, I mean, is that what you're bringing up?
And they should control this building, too.
I would, if you don't mind, we would have them come out, have them do that, and this building.
In this building.
Get us a quote.
I mean, I could tell you where the cameras are, and how it's all rigged up, but we, the constable uses that big TV. Uh, and watches.
That's one thing, that's one thing we'd want, though, you could have, cause Dan's got the ability to sit there and watch it live, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, this does too.
Rich would say.
This is on all the time.
If we switch to Bonney Multiplex for this, though, Rich would still have the ability to watch it live, and it's still.
Right, right.
I just worry about who take people through there, and if they see stuff, they, they might own that, you know. Especially with that caboose, we're gonna be putting stuff in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I'll, yeah, next week, okay?
Yeah, if you don't mind, we have them. Okay.
The ones here are really easy to find, they're, there's no, it's not a big deal. But I think.
What it'd take to have them take over the whole thing.
Yeah, because if, if something happens, they would be the ones to extract it. I know how to turn the TV on, that's it, I don't wanna know nothing else. As a matter of fact, when they, Scott, I had to have Scott come in and see if he could extract it for that detective, and he had to do this, that, and the other thing, and I, I don't wanna know nothing about it. But wouldn't they go under your, your buildings? Cause I think the history of the railway building, I think that's more for when they move the tower. I think that's what that was.
Okay. So we wanna take that out, and then we'll leave everything else.
Take that out, it's been zero forever.
But, you know, the town owns the schoolhouse, we own the buildings out there, so.
If you don't spend your fifteen thousand trees, you'll have money there to.
One tree's need to come back.
Take two of them down this year, and three of them down next year. The window takes them down. Celebration sofa, did we not pay them this year?
Not yet.
Home and Community Services. What is that?
That goes Tomo, that's.
Tomo and everything, okay.
Stuff like that.
Cause we're at nine hundred, for this year, we're ten thousand.
Well, it, well, it sounds like somebody is gonna be looking for grants, so.
Yeah. Only got ten thousand dollars. Spend, spend ten thousand dollars and get a fifteen hundred dollar computer. That's how government works, man. Refuge and garbage.
Okay, I'm going to suggest, because we've had residents voice express their interest in having a spring cleanup in the town of Sterling.
That's not here.
It should be. Where is it?
It's in the B fund.
B fund.
Oh, geez.
So move it to A?
Well, because if it's B, then the village of Fairhaven people shouldn't be coming to the town of Sterling if it's in the B, so it should be an A.
If.
It's up, just, we didn't change it, I think it's just done there.
No, no.
See what happened is, and, I mean, explain a little bit, because I have a problem with this, the village is gonna send over two men that day to help. Cause I told them, we can't police everybody that's coming in whether they're in the village or not.
Two men from what?
From the village.
To help.
To help.
With the cleanup day.
To help with the cleanup day.
September tenth.
September, what department are you calling it, so?
It's the village, the village DPW, there are two guys that are gonna come over and help us.
I didn't know they had two.
Yes, that's all they got. They're sending, the village is sending their entire workforce.
I was gonna say. You just took away a hundred percent of the workforce.
Yeah, at the time of Saturday morning, so they're getting, they're paying them overtime to come over and help. Um, it should be switched to. A fund, if we're gonna do it and include the village. Um. Well, you. My thought, and I've argued this before, is. The village has one in the spring. We have one in the fall, the one year. Was it COVID or whatever? Nobody was gonna do one, and then the village went ahead and did one in the spring, so we did the fall. My thought, what I'd like to do, is how it was originally intended, was have it with the village, we pay half, they pay half. But you want it in the spring and the fall.
There you go.
I, you know, I. I've had one person very boisterous about doing it in the spring.
I guess you have, it was in the newspaper, cause I perused those and found everything out.
My thought is, I think the fall one works better, I think the fall, we're getting. I don't agree with the spring, I think in the fall, everybody's done their summer thing, they're cleaning their yards up, the lawn chairs are smashed, blah, 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 that's where they bring stuff, I don't, I mean, that's the way I look at it.
Can we go together with the village? Or they, last time they said, no, they don't have the.
They don't want someone, I posed it to them this year, the mayor, yep, I'll talk to them and everything, and then, oh, they don't want to do it. The village does, there's a little different when they do theirs, we spent thirty something hundred last year on ours. The village, when they do theirs, they hire somebody to come in and tend. The garbage, putting everything in, we do it, one of their highway guys, and all their guys are gonna come over and help. I think for next year, yeah, definitely, we should probably move that to the A fund. I'm, I'm up in the air, if we do one, I think one a year is enough, I like the fall, we get a lot of good response from the fall. Um, people need, you know, the fall, they're gonna score that shit all winter, just to haul it off in the spring and bring it here.
Springtime's more visible.
What do you mean?
Your junk that's laying on your house.
Well, yeah, lots of grass, but.
A lot of my issues right now, um, involve tires and electronics, and those are things that they can't bring to this, what are those things that'd be considered possibly down the road, if you have interruption?
There's somebody.
We're not.
Somebody, you know, could, could. There's things the county does every year.
You use the tire drive.
Yep, you, the county has a tire driver, they can take tires there, take them all the way off, right?
Yep.
And if you can't get them to take them off, we're not gonna take them, plus we won't pick them up. Um. There's, we can do tires, but it's gonna cost.
Couple of dollars.
A lot.
We did this long time ago. I got it so that we were working with Oswego County. The residents could go over there and then something happened, I don't know what it was, and they stopped.
Somebody said a pile of tires on fire, he said, no more tires.
Does anybody have any connection at Crucible in Auburn? This crucible burns a shit ton of tires, a bunch of tires. Um, we take them to work. Take them there, but what it is, is when we take them, you gotta dump them, they put them in the furnace. So it's, you gotta kinda hold on to it till they take them, which we can't do that, but.
I've heard, I've heard of towns have like a, a big shredder come, you know.
Shred the tires.
Or shred papers. It's a big tub and.
They do that at work. Twice a year, they come in with a big truck.
But that's, but that's.
Papers we can put through the thing. I, we need to look into it, and I'm just. Um, Brian, always messes with him on Mantle Call, he had at one time, he was trying to get an electronics. Thing in the area where there was a place to take computers and stuff. The state fair does one every year, they do electronics, where they take. TVs or computers or whatever it's called.
You hear about them, they're like, but all the spots are filled, so, so sorry.
The tire, I mean, that, that's an issue, and I, you know, it's too late, they shouldn't do it. Um, the steel, the metal, last year, Dan loaded up. I think three or almost four dump truck loads of metal. Um, the guys hauled at the Witzman's in Syracuse, so you had four guys. Three hours involved, they had to go up there, and I think we ended up with around a thousand or eleven hundred dollars or something like a scrap. Um, seeing one scrap, is gonna, said they'd bring two dumpsters over at no cost. Hauled away, figure their cost out of it, if there's anything left over of this. So that's, and I talked about banning that, so that's a better deal than having us truck it. You go to the scrapyard, you remember. Piece of crap, it will, scrapyard, you gotta buy one dollar tire, so. I think that's.
It fuels up.
It fuels up, yeah, plus the manpower, you know.
So once again, I suggest that the town look at offering spring cleanup. And it should go under a eighty-one sixty point four two. No matter what. Either spring or fall or both, instead of the B account.
I think, what's the, is it eight thousand here, was it?
Seven.
Seven?
Forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents this year.
I think what that was, was an add or something that we missed. From last year.
We can do that, move that seven thousand to the A fund.
You can't move money from.
No, instead of, I'm just saying for next year.
Oh, yeah, take it out of the. Okay, so, A. Sixty point four two. And that is.
Do you have for seven thousand?
In recycling. Seven thousand. A eighty-one sixty point four two.
Are you suggesting Joan doing two of them?
Yeah, especially if we could do it cooperatively with the village.
Which I'd love to, I mean, whatever what the initial idea was when we, Jim Seale talking was, you know, the spring one, we were doing Fairhaven with. The fall one was in here, and then they decided they didn't want a lot of stuff. My thought is if you only do one, I think the fall's better.
Here's. How about having? Spin it this way, use our highway garage down there. Instead of having it in the village. I mean, I don't know if they could do that, have them come down here.
But I think if we combine our efforts, we could do something.
Once we, if we were to do a cooperative effort, then it's almost back to leaving it in the B fund. I don't know, because if you're doing the A fund, it's all, it's all of us, townwide.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so I can see the rationale for when the.
The town hasn't wanted to do it with us, so. I would say plan it, and, I mean, I. Seven thousand might be global, we'll can see what this year does because we're sure that the price of fuel and everything's gone up, so.
And that'll be for a spring cleanup.
I think for, you know, for the thirty-two hundred dollars we spent last year, they took a lot of stuff. Um, I think it was.
And we can try it and see, and if it's not well received, say, well, that didn't.
We need to talk to Dana because we need to make sure that we get the guys in the spring, we don't wanna do it in the spring when they're busy. You know, do whatever else they have to do, then they come out on Saturday. So that would, do that, and that would. I think the well monitoring's okay, is that?
Yes.
Did we get, they did it twice this year.
They do that every once in a while, every several years.
Skip a year.
They, they skip a year and it goes on, there's two in one year. And they, for some reason, they just can't get it to us, I don't know.
You blame it on, you get COVID and whatever.
Yeah, yeah, he was going through some stuff.
So, would you leave it at the ten thousand though, or?
I would.
Cemeteries, what's?
Okay. Well, right now, we give money to Sterling Center of a thousand dollars and to Martville. Both those cemeteries have to pay the state, and I don't know the figures, and I haven't had a chance to call the state. They have to pay them an annual fee every year. It doesn't matter if they're this big of a cemetery or a great big cemetery, it's the same. Uh, mowing. Mowing's going up. What I thought maybe is. Give fifteen hundred to Sterling Center, fifteen hundred for Martville, and then fifteen hundred for Overracker. Overracker is struggling, we don't wanna take it over.
Overracker is the one.
I'm advocating there, when I get the platform, I'm gonna do my speech on there.
And they've done that, looks exceptional. So you're thinking fifteen, fifteen?
She is, but I have my own thoughts on it, okay, because I went to the ceremonies and I am Sterling Centers. I spoke with Linda. Sweetie Smith. And she, I mean, they're on a shoestring budget, so I talked to her yesterday to get the scoop from her. And Sterling Center Cemetery Association relies on the town for the thousand dollars a year in donations. They have no regular revenues coming in. They pay four seventy-five per mowing, five, four hundred seventy-five dollars a mowing. And, um, they try.
I will tell you. Kurt was on that cemetery board and he says, yeah, how hard could it be? So we walked it, it's huge, and it's on a hill.
This is not all bad territory. And they tried to. They tried to, um, mow for Memorial Day, July Fourth, Labor Day, and then other times. I had a resident, or heard a resident brought to my attention, she got real emotional. Who has a number of relatives in the cemetery there in Sterling Center, and she said, I'm embarrassed, it needs to be cleaned up. I said, I will advocate for that. So again, um, what I'm suggesting is that for the Sterling Center Cemetery. Because I spoke to someone, got the, the numbers, I'm recommending that we budget three thousand. For the Sterling Center Cemetery. So it's just Sterling Center Cemetery, so they can get the mowing done, and here's the consequence. Maybe Charlie knows this. I remember before, you would know this, Lisa knows it. If the associations dissolve, don't do it, guess who gets responsible, legally responsible? The town, then we will be paying our highway people, or whomever we can get to do it. To go do the mowing, et cetera. I gotta believe it's cheaper to do what we're doing right now.
And the town clerk would be up in the cemetery every time somebody's buried and trying to find. I, I, I have a friend, town clerk that in Royalton, every time I call her, she's in the cemetery, and I'm like.
Well, we went through this with Overracker. Who's the guy who's in charge of the handle?
His daughter married my cousin, I can't remember who.
And he wanted to give us the money that was in their budget, but you can't do that. So we had had meetings and they formed a.
The association.
And they took it over.
Yeah, and they've really done a good job.
How much are we giving them now?
Nothing.
So we're giving fourteen hundred to. Fourteen hundred, the Sterling Center and fourteen hundred to Martville.
It's a thousand dollars. The eight hundred dollars was there for, uh, Jim Crawler, who lives on the side of. The cemetery, his wall was collapsing, and it was. The cemetery's wall, and it was going onto him. So we had a little push in there of eight hundred dollars for things like that, that came up that. If Sterling Center needed it, we would give it to them.
I think Martville's well funded.
Yeah, I reached out to Carolyn Waterman by email, but, and I spoke with her the day we did the tour with the revolutionary. It's much easier to mow, right, right, and she has gotten back to me. But I put it, I said, let me know, and I'll advocate for you if you let me know what kind of.
Is that the number she requested, or is that? Linda.
Linda, she said even a thousand more. I said, I'm gonna say three thousand. And that way you can get it mowed because they're, they're on a shoestring budget. I know what our fund balance is now. And so this is, this is. This is visible, and it's important to the people, in my opinion.
I'm just, I think it needs to be fair. You know, what?
But I, like he said, I think Martville is.
Well. We don't give, how much do we give to Springbrook?
Flushed with.
So if we're gonna talk about fairness, we don't give anything to Springbrook.
Is Overracker asking for anything now? I mean, I, I think.
But I think it would help.
I think, I think it would help them, but I think fifteen's a lot.
How would their plats have been sold?
They're never gonna get anything more. And I think Sterling, I talked to. Gene, and he said they're, they got a few left, but they're. They're getting close.
The perpetual care that some sheriffs, it was like. Fifteen dollars for posterity and. That's one of the problems, is paying for perpetual care with old money.
Right. So that's what I'm advocating for.
There's two other cemeteries.
One of them. Mowed twice a year at least.
Actually, wasn't the sheriff's department doing that?
Woodruff, Ben, and Ladoo.
Yeah, but that's, Ladoo is pretty clean.
Is it clean?
Yeah, I haven't been in there since.
Does somebody take care of that, or?
No, we should be.
The car club did it one year and cleaned it out, but the trees are starting to grow. It's not bad compared to where it was, yet.
Would it be possible, if we're gonna split this up, and this is a pack question, can we say? Uh, Sterling Center Cemetery Point.
I was gonna suggest that.
Because it would be, make it a lot easier.
I like to eighty-one oh point four one two.
Yeah. But I, I think.
If somebody give me the name and I'll set it up.
All right, but are we gonna give anything to Springbrook?
They have a board.
If we do, we gotta take it out of your budget. I would say Sterling Center. Martville, Overracker, now would you have another account for, that would cover the other smaller ones? Instead of having them all in one?
The worst one.
Which one?
But we need a free budget for it, we need to make sure we pay.
Like if one of the guys up there is working to clean it up, that. His, his salary comes out of that account.
Right. And then we can send our guys over.
They did get out there this spring and cleaned up all of it.
So. We're thinking Sterling Center.
Center, Martville, Overracker, and do you want, can we do?
And I would move the other three all in one, I think.
Because we take care of.
Town owned or town managed, yeah. Each one? I, as long as they're our responsibility.
Responsible for all those three cemeteries to do.
So we call it town, town managed?
Responsible or town managed?
She knows.
Okay, so A, eighty-eight, ten point four one will be which cemetery?
Yeah, let her say that.
Is everybody, Sterling Center?
Works for me.
Martville.
Why don't you talk to Carol, Carol and see?
I reached out to her by email, I've not heard back from her.
How much are they giving, how much were we giving them last year? Did we donate a thousand? What, fifteen for Martville?
What do we give in Martville?
Fifteen, good with everybody? Overracker, would you do? It's a lot smaller. I would think a thousand.
Overracker spelled the way it's overracker.
There's one R.
One R? I have voice pulled it too.
Actually, the original name was Overpinker.
So that's why, town managed is, how much are we doing for those?
We got mowed three times a year, I think.
At least two times.
Figured, how long you figured, would it be an eight hour day, six hour day?
Work crew went in there and they had it done within less than a day. But they did it all weedy.
I, I'm thinking an eight hour day. So figure a hundred and. Hundred and sixty dollars.
You gotta do that all by hand.
Labor.
You can't run a mower and then.
Times three. Figure an eight hour day, times. We set a part-time guy, figure twenty dollars an hour, freeze and figure. Times three cemeteries. It's four hundred eighty dollars to do it once. We did it three times.
I don't know if one guy could do all that up top there.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
That's a lot of.
It is a lot.
They had a crew in there of probably five or six guys. And they used to. And then, they did their job.
So three, three guys would be four hundred eighty dollars in labor for one day. If you sent three guys in, they'd make out three dollars an hour. Three dollars.
Is that one of those situations where you could possibly get the, um, the sheriff's department to?
Use their work crew?
Yeah.
I did.
I don't.
Stop, stop working.
Yeah.
They don't have.
Okay, I, I knew they were down during COVID, but I thought they were back up.
So if we, if we figured, if we figured five hundred dollars in labor each time we went in there, which would cover probably labor and gas. There's three cemeteries, that'd be fifteen hundred dollars to do them all once. It'd be three thousand dollars to do them all twice. We get them three times and be forty-five hundred dollars.
Good, crazy. Yeah, considering Sterling Center.
Becky probably told Becky four hundred dollars should be over there in Hartley.
Yeah, with that.
About once. For the small.
I mean, I, I don't know, you. Would you?
I'd say a thousand.
Josh.
I don't know.
I would think fifteen hundred, just.
Okay, fifteen hundred, so we can move on, fifteen hundred? What do you think, Lee? It's a start.
Yeah.
How much are we paying now?
Is there a lot of initial cleanup leave where after, once they did it once? If we kept after, it'd be easier the next times or is it?
Yeah, or if you go in there and.
Like you said, Ladue Road isn't that, Ladue Road's back in the woods, so that you could probably spray that.
The one over on Ladue Road, where's the, is that the one Ladue?
It's on Sterling Station Road, but it's called Ladue. Doesn't that sit back in the woods kinda?
Yeah.
So that one.
It's small.
It's small and it's shaded, so. The one down north, there is, it's very wide open.
Yeah. Does anybody, any locals going to do that or no?
No.
Sorry. Good with cemeteries?
Yep.
Employee benefits?
Yeah, those are, um.
These are all.
I feel it's pretty accurate, but I don't have my own process from everybody.
All the sheriffs.
Oh, so Pat, why, why can state retirement go down? You budgeted a lot?
The percentage I called on it.
Really? Okay, wow, cuz I saw that, that was unusual.
Yeah.
People are dying and retiring.
When I pulled the, um, estimated.
Plus the big increase in cemeteries.
Right, interesting, okay.
That service.
So.
Oh, right about health insurance. Did you skip over health insurance?
I, I said on, all these employee benefits are their destinies because I'm still waiting for final figures and I did some percentages and like.
Should we put something under unemployment insurance?
Well, I.
Or is that a draw from?
That was on, we only one right.
I don't know why we couldn't.
I mean, we.
We had told them, I says, she was appointed for a year, we get rehired.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Oh, I went through that with a bar.
Dog control.
D A R and with dog control.
With a bar, really?
Yes, because the first, we were one of the last employers, so we got.
Hundred dollars a year?
We got to, uh.
How much did they draw on that?
Like four bucks. That would've been fifteen years ago or something. I don't remember the details.
Even if you're appointed.
I can remember having a hearing on it and I was on the phone with a hearing on it.
And we had a dog census go around and count dogs. And then she filed an employment on us. And I said, it was a contract.
Right.
They told us it didn't matter.
Right, yeah.
No, cuz that's what I told him. I'm like, he's like, well. I said, well, we didn't feel she was, you know, best person for the job or anyone else.
Doesn't matter.
Problems of being here, which is supposed to be here and she was appointed for a year and let her finish her year out. He's like, no.
Alrighty, so the next page looks like. Page seven. We done with that? Ready to move on to revenues? Right, well, Jonathan's here. We need to get through, so let's.
Real property, you don't believe in that?
Yeah, we did an entry, so, and you never. Shouldn't drop, shouldn't drop.
Everything.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Normally, when I put a tenant together for the town, we leave the, the, um, real property tax until there's a discussion.
Right, yeah, but it looks fine, from my, my standpoint, looking at the bigger picture.
Yeah.
Um, do we wanna, on the bottom, any of that sale scrap, sale of forest products, minor sales, sale of market property? Is there any of that stuff we should take off or? I paid seven on the bottom, or paid one of, come on.
You can take off a twenty-six sixty.
Sale of market.
The bottom, cuz that's been gone.
Revenues?
A number of years.
Which one?
A twenty-six sixty, sale of market.
Oh geez, yeah, I was supervisor while I did that.
Get rid of those.
Okay.
Sale of scrap.
Sale of scrap, we might.
That we have done, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sale of forest products I was taking off.
Well, uh, I don't know, we decided to do some logging around here.
Okay.
How, what kind of trees are those five trees out in this?
The trees out here? Sell logs out of there when they get done?
It's fire.
Okay.
Leave that for now. Missed a lane, yes, local sources. Refund the prior years, that's all stuff we should leave.
Right. The state aid too.
State aid.
Cuz we're looking at a justice grant now.
Okay.
So, that's good at the eighteen.
I don't know about the mortgage tax.
Well, the mortgage tax, the justice grant I would leave for sure. I didn't know about the clean energy grant, transportation grant.
We don't have a records management grant that can go. Clean energy grant, that probably could go too. I'm just thinking of your grant.
Well, I don't know if there's a grant that exists yet, so.
Okay.
That's still in the conversation phase to see if we could get.
That would be.
Be anyways, yeah.
Okay.
I gotta leave a three eight, I, this eight three zero eight nine, I don't think that's the right definition because eight three oh eight nine, I think is for ship services, which we do a lot of now.
Oh, wow, okay, so leave that.
So I don't know where that, how long.
So, leave eight thirty, eighty-nine?
Thirty, eighty-nine, leave.
Okay. We probably could take out the generator.
Gosh, maybe needing a new one.
Yeah.
Been there.
Take it out.
Oh, no, no, it's been replaced.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Do I take that out?
Yeah, take that out.
Federal leave.
Wait a minute, and take out a thirty, thirty-eight ninety-seven grant for relocation of signal.
Oh, that must be the signal tower.
That's correct.
And we're reading the transportation grant.
I.
I don't know what that is.
I don't either. I'd say take it out if you gotta have a back. You can put it back, yeah. I'm not sure what federal aid is or.
I don't know, that's where our wish should have gone, but that was last year, so, no.
Not that's the.
Railroad signal tower, I had to run the grant money for the Sterling Historical Society, Don Richardson, through the town for accountability.
Yeah, so that's coming up.
So I didn't know if, I mean, I don't remember, but I do know we had to manipulate or cooperate with, um, having that money come in and out of the town. So I think O S C was giving a guidance on that at the time. That could be that.
You all good with all that?
No.
Time to be.
Okay.
I mean, we're at a hundred to thirty thousand last year, we spent almost twelve thousand.
You wanna stake for the point?
We leave that. I believe in that or you wanna?
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't reduce it in this day and age.
Yeah.
Engineer, you've got five thousand?
I would leave it there.
Is that?
The planning board.
Exactly.
Is, it really makes decisions sometimes where it could benefit from having an engineer.
What I'm saying is, Doug Miller now.
That's B, we need to be an A with Doug.
Doug, you can't pay Doug out of.
I.
Depends on what we're working on.
This is true.
Right, and that's, it's the same with the attorney. It depends on what the attorney's doing, whether it comes out.
I'm just thinking back, we didn't have anything in B for Doug or.
Well, we saw R and D, I talked to, I think that we said Toma Grant Writing, isn't it?
Correct.
We came up with a line item that seemed somewhat justifiable for Doug Miller.
Same as the Toma stuff first, cuz there was plenty of that there. The L W R P grant writing, is that how paid off now? So that's zero this year, okay.
So make it a zero.
So be nineteen eighty-nine point four zero. I couldn't remember if that was paid off.
This year.
Yep. Safety, nothing.
Please, you can take that one out.
Okay.
Safety inspections. You're up, Dan.
So we can move the eight to a six and seventy-three percent consistent with everybody else.
Twenty thousand.
Six hundred. Compared to that eight to a six. Our clerk position, we already discussed.
Yep.
Fire inspector is Kevin Foster, we have five hundred budgeted, but just in reference, um, this year, if they compose to that, so I think that's a safe number.
He only charges us like a hundred and something.
Less than two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. I told, I told him if we make it healthier, he's like, I don't know why you so low.
Well, that's, that's respectable, so, so he, um, he, uh, he definitely has five hundred level. I don't see us, I see that in a budget, we won't, that's out next year and I think that's fine for, you know, I go. As far as the equipment goes, that, the, uh. Alright, so the equipment, that's the, uh, postage.
Yeah.
Also the trash. Oh, it's not on one, we got six thousand on. You got six thousand. Oh, my, the one one, you gotta go.
Equipment's point two.
Oh, you got your glasses upside down. I have to draw a line here, my limit's five hundred. Yeah, so, when I was talking about the, the work, the work station. Um, and in here I indicated, when I looked at Williams and Law, what would be the cloud? Uh, that it didn't really make sense with Williams and Law to license a second computer, the cost was prohibitive. Um, however, I think if you look at doing the program you use.
TeamViewer?
The TeamViewer, you get a group license, uh, that would make a better use of that waves instead of putting it in cloud, uh, or licensing another computer that make a better use of.
Or something equivalent through computer outlet or.
Yeah, right.
I know, I think my, my license expires this year.
Well, I'm just, I have TeamViewer as well.
And you get on your computer?
Yeah, you can get right on there. Williamson has TeamViewer built into their software.
Correct.
But that allows them to only access my computer, doesn't allow me to be only. Access your, go on my computer and do work. It's their backdoor way in for maintenance or, cuz I, I did some trading with them this year, um, where I set the computer and I, I click on my TeamViewer, they log in from their end. So it's there, I just don't have a way for me to access it on my. So they sit there and they took care, took the mouse and controls if I was in the office, which, which are great. I don't know a lot about that.
See, they told me that if I left the TeamViewer on, had my Casper username set there, that I could use my computer at home for that.
Okay, so we can clarify that.
That's what Ted told me a few years ago.
Yeah, but you gotta have a license to.
Yeah, I haven't checked into it, I'm just saying.
See, I have a report and the deputy and my computer that I can use.
So, the, uh, the computer in my office looks good, that, that's not an issue. And I.
A printer?
No, the printer's fine too. So.
Lisa got a special on printers.
She had to give me a printer, I'm like, I don't need that. Um, what I, what I'd rather use, and for this year, when I look at the budget, I don't believe I spent any of my equipment money this year either. Um, I don't know if there's a way to roll things or how that works.
What we usually do is you buy something, in, in December, we pay half of the, this year's budget and then the other half of the next year's budget.
So the reason I'm contacting Toma is regarding the grant, is they have these tough book laptop computers with a docking station and the idea would be to replace the computer, the desktop. I like, I mean, my two monitors, I mean, I use them, but would be able to have a docking station, I plug the tough book in, use it same as I do my current desktop. This would allow the Williamson programmers to be on the computer. At the same time, that can be removed off and be taken out of the field, similar to like, what that needs to pose a, needs output to take. Would allow them to take pictures in the field, running the computer as well as a tough book. Um, and also you could issue violations right in the field, stop work orders, um, and actually, uh, then they would do their inspections, make notes right in the computer in the field and update that information in the field. It, it's just an attempt to kind of streamline the office in a way that makes it more effective with your time. And, and more math as well. Um, my two vehicles both have internet capabilities, the car, I think a lot of them do today. But if you don't, you can still go to the office and download that information or upload that information, whatever, put it on computer. You also hear, uh, so your activities and different, uh, dates, times, inspections and stuff right in the field. Uh, it's not a night going on. That's why it's on Toma, the city, the offset cost wise, uh, so it's not a big expense cuz you're probably at approximately, uh, back in station depending on the computer system and access of two thousand hours. So it's not necessarily cheap, but I, I think going forward, it would benefit the office as far as its own and capability as far as field access. And, and basically make the office more efficient. Instead of having to come back and type everything up and take that report information. Uh, it also allow access if the person took the laptop. You know, the tough book is important because you're taking it in the field. God forbid you dropping how fragile laptop is, these tough books are actually designed to be used in the field. There's certain structures, there's reports for reviews for the, for being out there. I've actually seen a demonstration where they make sure all against the wall. I will math, so that's kind of what we stated. So it's just something, if you thought I could have that picture, worst case scenario is that it's thrown me on the door. But at the end of the day, I think there's some wiggle in there. As far as, you know, some points for like the five hundred that we use this year, five hundred I put in the budget for next year. Most of my, uh, my tour, my printer, my printer, my computer, my mileage, my postage, that often adds six thousand dollars to us, due to the fact that I raised it, because that forty-eight seventy-five has been consistent. Forty-eight seventy-five, if you look at what I spent, I don't, I don't have any sheet. So I don't know so far, twenty-five to one, so I'm just over half of those expenditures right now, that have not really tipped the iceberg of letters, qualifications, and people out there, and the way the postage, I don't know, personally. I'd like to stay under that, under the number assigned. It's also still, uh, on pace to be net, whether it's zero, uh, fixed a lot. The historical fee structure, and this year for fees. What I brought this year so far, my forty-two seventy-three, for my fee structure for this year, actually. Five day. Five day thousand twenty. I write too much. Five day generally, eighty-one hundred twenty, even last year, uh, twenty-one, which appears to have been a very down year for the codes office, was still fifty-eight fifty. And there wasn't a lot of activity last year, uh, permits, and, uh, the follow-up, a couple of things I've done. I've done a couple of letter writing campaigns this year, preparing compliance with the LUR, uh, the RV temporary permits, the campground rules for the operating permits, and just trying to get caught on some of the areas that will be likely to move to town. Which has generated some of that revenue this year, hopefully it continues to stay. Anyways, that's, that's, that is why I the big increase in my budget is really that clerk position, as far as the my letters better for my talks, so. When you really want to hit that six hundred out of that twenty, I'm trying to, but I think that's sell myself short.
Question, for the equipment, would it be the town equipment, if you got the docking station and so?
It's all owned by the town, it's not owned by, it's not part of the town, not if you have town.
Okay, in other words, if you left the town, the equipment would stay?
Yeah, if you were fired, the equipment stays.
That's not wrong with them.
Well, what it would be, Jonas, he'd have a, he'd have like basically a laptop that he could take in his pickup, or his car.
Right.
Do what he had to do. And then, when he came back to the office, he put it at the docking station, and then worked right on his.
I can remember an issue with a former CEO, when the CEO left, we lost, lost information, am I correct in that, if you might comment?
And we had a supervisor that wanted a laptop to do all his work at his house, and there was no way.
It's all, it's all town property, he was purchased by the town, and taken by the town. I did get rid of it, and it backed, and the rest of the state, there's some sheriffs still.
Right, which would you recommend, sheriffs or state police? Sorry, let's not go down that. I'm having fun with this, sorry. Jonathan, you totally have my support, we don't want to lose you.
All you want.
With our CEO. No, I don't.
So, my question is, Jonathan, are you asking for more than the five hundred, or are you good with the five? I'm okay with the five hundred, I, I report to pursue a grant. Obviously, I don't have the purchase information yet. I, I haven't devolved that much into it. If the board is receptive to the idea, um, I'll put together a package and see if I can get any financial aid from, uh, talking to Toma, and see if there's a grant that might.
Sure, that, I think that's a brilliant idea.
They have to represent it later, when I have the higher numbers, and see before the end of the year, I mean, that's, I have a thousand, if I lose five hundred, I want five hundred another. And maybe we can come up with something else where they're here to make up some of the difference. Okay, if the board sees that.
Right.
Depending on what the, the grant, whether they're mayor or an actor.
I support your having the tools that you need to get the job done as efficiently as possible.
I, I think it just streamlines and makes it more efficient. Whether it's me or somebody else, they have the opportunity to do work in the field. And then again, you know, if the computer in the, if we do that, that computer's in the office, the monitors stay, the monitors, you know, you still do that, it's just a docking station, and then you can pull out to. That would actually, um, you can still remote in if you add to a TeamViewer, but you can also use that in other places. And honestly, to the safety of the office, outside of the field, I personally prefer still have TeamViewer. It's not a computer at home, I can remote in, but out in the field, then, then that's not in possession, or not, and it's in the office, so someone else needs access, that's it.
Right.
And that will take, you know, it's, like I said, the computer in there right now actually works too well. Uh, and we really, I mean, Susan's really open for something.
Right, and something I would like to clarify, and I probably asked you this, but, um, that if, if you, if you get the CEO clerk who's here, when you go in the field, would you take the clerk with you, or would the clerk be here to?
No, I, I don't want the clerk in the field.
Okay, well, see, I, from experience, I've seen that happen. So, I'm just looking to make sure that's clear whenever.
Yeah, and I'd like to make sure that's clear too. No, the clerk would be we're not gonna train the clerk, she's not gonna take the clerk along. I know, I, I just had to say that, because I don't want another, we got a clerk, but that raises another question, where your docking station thing. Well, that's why. If you have a clerk, and you're in a field with your computer, then you're still gonna need a computer here. It, it may be, it may, that's a generous point. And as far as the clerk goes, my main concern with the clerk, um, is, is right now I have it may be only just below six hundred, it was six hundred, I'm still in there, it's what I bring in numbers earlier this year. I'm in the process of closing them out, but the thing is, I also have files, there are fire inspection reports, and there's stuff going back to the early two thousands that are stuffed in the cabinets without any tax map numbers, without any thing out, just stuffed in drawers. And, um, Lisa's been generous enough to, uh, allow me to have Darlene, we've used her a couple days in order to, uh, just identify this property, tax map numbers on a stack of papers as big as she's now gonna file in. And that's, basically that's clerical work. And then, then right now, I don't know, you know, we have a lot of the stack, our three filing drawers, that really could use some follow-up as well, whereas I'm starting to go through and send others. I bring, and a lot of this stuff, like, and it doesn't compute to a good point, so I, I'll write it one more. It's just a matter of putting in the envelopes, and then it's stopped on and running through the mail or the head out, which is taking time away from.
He shouldn't be doing that, no.
I, I think it's, I think, you know, I thought this previously, it would be great to have a clerk that was here to handle whole tier things. I believe somebody who owns this unit all the time.
Yeah, and we did at one time, in fact, we had the clerk who was the clerk for the CEO planning board, ZBA. But it was like the glue that they put for the communication. So it really makes sense to be working together, because you just all work together. You over that so much.
Okay.
So you've got my support a hundred and ten percent. Okay, so. Shall we get?
We should be on the hammer, but.
Yeah, let's get.
The ambulance.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute, how about be forty, twenty point one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I got ahead of this all. I'm.
That's the same deal as the other.
Same deal as the other ones. Everybody good?
I'm comfortable with that, that's fine. I think it's Lisa, right?
Yes.
Ambulance. Ambulance. I spoke with the mayor, he was gonna meet with Stan to go over it and get something together, Charlie spoke with Stan.
Yeah.
I think just numbers, these numbers are probably gonna be a little weak, uh, because they've had to hire paid drivers, and whether, I don't.
I haven't dug into it that far, but.
My thing is, we're kind of liking the game to do it, but my thought would be is, if Fairhaven's gonna get in the paid ambulance service, maybe should look in at maybe Mender for part of it, or.
Oh, wow.
And I, and I don't know what their contracts are, it's all paid by paid by trip type deal, but I don't see where, I mean, just looking at, I don't know how Fairhaven's the only village left that's got a ambulance, and paying, paying people to do it compared to these other places. But what's happening is Fairhaven's ambulance and Fairhaven's medics that weren't paying a contract for a running constantly, won't get animal, Cato covering anybody else. And I, you know, we need to look real hard at this contract. Because I don't want to subsidize them to be able to cover other, other municipalities.
Right, because when I called for an ambulance, they were on another call, I waited forty-five minutes for Menders to come out.
Yeah, so, and that's what people are, you're running into, is you call Fairhaven ambulance, well, no, they're in Rochester, because they had to go cover way back, so they sent Mender out.
Okay, so what are we gonna do about this right now?
I think we need to wait till, hopefully we can get some numbers.
So, the two of you, right, will be getting numbers.
Yeah.
Well, you're on the committee, right? Who's on the committee?
Me and Charlie.
Oh, okay.
You're going to get on, or, I mean, I'll help him with that one, I just, I just spoke to the mayor the other day and said, who do we talk to, what, well, I don't even know if the contracts need this year now.
Yeah, I've been going back and forth with Nate, uh, with emails and, and stuff like that. I basically told him give you a quick rundown.
Yeah, if you don't.
And it's all Fairhaven now, right? That's really all.
Which Red Creek doesn't even have a ambulance.
No. We'll get those.
Yeah, it's way, is that way back?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, just give me this, uh, talks to me last night, so he says, hi Stan, you in Fairhaven today? Yes, I am, talked with the mayor, went sometime possibly, I haven't, I was the evening. I'm sorry, next one, sir. Right, so, what I'm proposing is, the guy's real busy, he's hard to deal with, but what he's saying is, uh, I have to talk with the mayor first. Looking for more, because we're going to have to start paying drivers, which will increase our operating budget by quite a bit. So, I want, so the P L has had long, so hopefully we use some solid numbers. Or semi-solid anyway.
My question is, do we reach out to Wayback? And we, we got through this, that's just my thing, I don't want to just take, I don't want to be burdened that we have to take the number that Fairhaven gives us, that's way out of reason. You know what I mean?
Well, it sounds like something that me and Charlie could.
Yeah, that's what I'm just asking. You guys.
Investigate further.
And I don't know if it's realistic.
Right.
Because Mender covers Hannibal, right? And you got three different districts, you got the south end, possibly Wayback, the rest of the Mender, I don't know. You know, the mayor says, well, we hire, we end up hiring hot drivers and stuff, I don't know if they're talking a five percent increase, or a fifty percent increase.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, any benefits, not that, of all that.
Yeah.
Are they, are the contracts the same same terms, drawn free? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, all the ambulance come through one year, and then all the fire come through the next year.
Right.
There's three different districts.
Sometimes it's every two years. Some of our contracts are
Every two years.
Two years or one year, it just depends on what the committee figures out.
So maybe you do it one year, this time.
Yeah, we're gonna need ninety percent to have an fire in ambulance together.
Okay, no, no.
You don't want to do that.
Okay, so you're gonna research that.
Yeah, culture and recreation, do we even need this?
No.
So we can take.
Westbury. And the parks.
Parks.
That's out.
Seventy-one, ten, point oh one, point oh four. Libraries, are we?
It's on the school bills.
So what do schools pay for?
I will just say, I advocate for putting in five hundred dollars for each of the three. Just because my background's education, I believe knowledge is power, and libraries just send the message of educating information.
I, I feel that every time you have a school budget, hopefully, and then another.
It's very generous.
I think I paid, I think.
I realize that.
I think I made five hundred dollars for the libraries.
But that doesn't mean the library can function on just that. I know we did.
Do we take these accounts right out, and you're not gonna use them, or leave them there for?
Usually there's, often, there used to be representatives from the libraries, especially Red Creek, that would show up and.
But they didn't use to levy the school taxes.
Correct. Okay, so that's my thought.
Home and community services.
So are you removing those three line items, or leaving?
I would, my thought would be remove them, we haven't done it in a few years. Unless we think we're gonna.
I say leave them on, and then in case something happens, maybe they'll remove the library tax and school taxes.
You can put them back up.
Let's take, I say you take them off.
Okay. Yeah, I would have signed it out of mind.
So I think we had this conversation last year.
Right.
Um, zoning.
Okay, so, apparently she did not submit anything?
Did she?
He's off.
Yeah.
Oh, she did, okay. It says nothing.
That one, she didn't, that's when it said, ask Lisa. You, and you said, no, I don't think that's right, it thinks saying, ask Lisa Summers, I think, but Lisa Summers gave me this.
Well, it looks like we never, we better opt it.
I think better.
Because today, it was July thirty-first, it's almost two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And, so it budgeted fourteen, so we're, we're over budget right now, in that line item. So we better not keep it at fourteen hundred. That's probably postage, stamps, copies correctly, so Cooper?
Yes, advertisement.
Yeah, yeah, all those certified.
Why would you do that, three?
Excuse me?
Would you go three thousand, or?
Twenty-five hundred.
At least twenty-five hundred.
I know, because we're at nineteen in July. Yeah.
Also low.
Oh, yeah, true.
Eighty-ten point one. He's at twenty-eight hundred.
Correct, okay, so what, can we do B eighty-ten point four one first, because I wrote it down that way, contractual, should be twenty-five hundred.
For which one, point four?
Point four.
At least, if not more.
Well, you wanna go with the three that he's suggesting?
I don't know.
I'm thinking nineteen, and that's the end of July, so you've still got.
Well, it just depends, I don't know.
How much is going on? It's not gonna be a lot more.
All right, but we have a very active code enforcement officer, which has been great, because he's picking up things.
Right.
And sending people to the ZBA, so I think that that's.
Yeah, right. Well, we can say, what did you say, Scott?
Three thousand.
I would think three.
Yeah, I would too.
Because I think twenty-five hundred's only six hundred more than, you know, the rest of the.
Right, yeah, make it three, three thousand.
Okay, and then the point one account for a ZBA.
Is that, so is that Lisa Summers?
Lisa Summers.
Why?
Why is she so high? Is she hourly, or?
She's hourly.
Is she?
And she's been spending a lot of time, you know, it it's not just sending letters out, it's doing seekers.
Yeah, I'm not, no, I'm not.
I'm just saying that.
Right.
And it depends on how many, I'm gonna say cases the ZBA has in front of them.
Right, they've been very active.
They've been very active this year.
Yes, they have.
Previous years, not so much.
Right.
This year, oh yes.
Right, right.
And if we go fourteen, or fifteen, sixty an hour for her, you know, you gotta.
Okay, I just, I just did the quick math, so, if the twenty-eight, twenty-three, sixty divided by seven months.
Right.
Times twelve months.
Right.
Would be forty-eight, forty. So I would think this instead of twenty-two, seventy-three, it ought to be forty-eight or five thousand.
Right, right, which one?
I would go five, I think.
Sure.
I don't think she's gonna be doing any less work.
No, yeah, and it's not like it's salary, it's hourly, so.
That's why I, that's why I questioned, if she's salary, how could she go be so far over, if she's hourly, that, that would be used to be.
So change B eighty-ten. So change B eighty-ten point one to five thousand.
Yep.
And then B eighty-ten point four to three thousand.
We missed that last year because twenty-twenty-one expenditures were twenty-six.
Correct.
We only budgeted twenty-two.
Correct.
So we should have caught that last year.
Planning.
Planning.
Same deal there.
Same deal.
They meet monthly.
Wow.
They meet monthly.
Yeah, but she's, she's underspent.
She's underspent. I wonder if she's billing more? Yeah, because she's way under. Her point one, she's at seventeen and she's budgeted for forty-four, so she's gonna.
I don't know, I can't speak for her, she'll, right.
Yeah, I don't know, right. And then contractual, she's eight eighty-five and she's budgeted seventeen, so that's. I would think that's close.
So leave it?
Nine times two would be eighteen hundred, so I would think maybe they're good.
Yeah, I would say leave them.
Who goes?
Yeah, never, make, we're making amendments to the LUR, so that's a few more hours of time that she'll be spending on.
So we're on to page three, ruffus and cleanup, take that one, take that completely out. That's basically.
B eighty-one, sixty point four is the cleanup with Fairhaven?
Refuse.
Yeah.
Or take that one out.
Round zero.
Yeah, so this is zero, we'll take, take that line out.
Okay.
Take it right out.
Now, because you increased, uh. I don't know yet, I was thinking if you increase Lisa Summers. Hours per se, does that increase your retirement, social security and Medicare?
The social security and Medicare, I, it's just a guess, because I knew that at least pay was solid.
Okay.
That would be minimal when it was very done.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Hopefully, like I said, that's a guess, I didn't know the actual, but I kind of looked at the sun edges and looked at the tiers and tried to do a math to come up with that. But, um, yes, we're just very. I have to draw those again.
Revenues.
I just kind of.
Yeah, what we did last year, the. The sales tax, we're already, we were budgeted in total of like three, four, we're.
Budgeted, we budgeted?
No.
Up one hundred?
No, that's what we did last year, for, for B, the rest goes to DB.
You should have made more money this year, right?
In the revenues, okay? But what I'm saying is, total between B and DB. We were budgeted for like three hundred eighty-four in revenue. From sales tax.
Correct.
We're at three forty-something now, I think, or three twenty, so we're, we're gonna meet that, we're gonna be two hundred over again. Um, last year we raised it from the eighty-five, eight twenty-nine to the hundred.
Correct.
Which was fifteen thousand more, which was conservative.
Right.
I think. I think we look good as far as the budget matter, if we leave it that, and I'm just gonna put that extra. Over into the DB. That's kind of my thought process. Revenues.
Okay, right, B eleven twenty, yep.
Yep, B eleven twenty.
Okay.
I'm just saying that we, there's gonna be, we're gonna have a lot more. We're gonna be over probably close to two hundred.
I would anticipate that.
Um. Who knows what next year's gonna bring, I think the economy's gonna take a dump here before too long.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah. Um, you know, so I don't know what that's gonna be, I'd rather stay conservative on it, we could put a little more into DB. They're in the B instead of DB, but. Just.
I would say, let's take a look at DA, DB, DB, when we meet with Dan, and then look at.
How much more we need there.
Yes, that would be my thought. Yeah, what we gotta deal with, in my opinion, is DA. So, but, we'll get to that when we meet with Dan.
Um. Everything else is just.
Well, I was looking at resorting fees. We're at thirteen hundred now.
Right, go to two thousand or not?
Maybe not that much. This is a revenue, not.
I go low and I go high.
Exactly, there you go.
Like sixteen or eighteen hundred?
Fifteen, I'd go fifteen hundred, if you're gonna, I would say fifteen hundred. I'd say, I.
Because we're past the busy part of the year, so.
True.
Yeah. Fifteen hundred through B twenty-one, ten.
Right.
The B twenty-five, fifty-five licenses and permits. That's five thousand, we're at forty-six ninety now.
I'm sorry, which one, I'm sorry.
B twenty-five, fifty-five licenses and permits. That's building permits and stuff, right?
Yep.
We're at forty-six ninety now, last year we took in fifty-eight, fifty. For five thousand.
I'm okay with it, I'm comfortable leaving at five thousand, building season's gonna be slowing down, so.
Okay. That would be the one.
Probably could get rid of B twenty-seven, seventy.
Yeah. Okay, why remove that?
How is that a?
I don't know.
How was that a revenue?
Two seven seven zero is a revenue account number, but I don't know. I think that was put on before she came around.
Right, but why would they put the tax?
No idea.
Unless they were paying us for your tax, our tax.
No.
No. All right. Want to go through your list?
Yep. Okay. Maybe you need something, right? Excuse me, you're gonna give me something. You want my hen's bridge now? I, I will. But you want it for tomorrow, right? Now, I don't mean. By Monday. I still have to do my minutes from the last meeting. A thirty-five, thirteen fifty-five point one assessor is thirty-six, one ninety-four. A fourteen, ten point one town clerk is forty-one, three sixty-eight. A fourteen, twenty point four attorney is forty thousand. A nineteen twenty point four is the associate town dues is eleven hundred.
Oh, I didn't pick up on that. So that's A.
Nineteen twenty point four.
Okay. Okay, because I have nine nine nine, I didn't realize it got changed, the, it's changed to.
Eleven hundred.
Okay.
A six, seven, seven, two point four one scapping. Twenty-five hundred. A six, seven, seven, two point four two recreation is four thousand. A seventy-five, ten point two historic equipment, five hundred. A seventy-five, ten point four historic contractual, two thousand. A eighty-one, sixty point four two refuse and recycling is seven thousand. A eight, eight, ten, and we'll figure out which point. Is Sterling Center Cemetery is three thousand, Markville is fifteen hundred, Over rocker a thousand, and Town Management is fifteen hundred. B nineteen eighty-nine point four is dealt LWRP grant is zero. And is that something you might want to take out too, or?
I don't.
The, it, B nineteen eighty-nine four four, because we're not gonna have it next year.
Yeah.
I mean, I just like. If you want to condense things again.
Yeah, I had a cross talk, what are we gonna take out, so?
Uh, B thirty-six, twenty point one personal services for code enforcement is twenty thousand six hundred. B eighty-ten point. Eighty-ten point four ZBA contractual is three thousand. B eighty-ten point one ZBA personal services is five thousand. B eighty-one, sixty point four cleanup with Fairhaven is zero. And B for the revenues, B twenty-one, ten zoning fees is fifteen hundred.
Alrighty. Lee raised his hand, you made that call, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I'll second that. Lee.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Joan. Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Somebody adjourn the meeting? Everyone in favor?
Let me know.
Nine fifty-six.
Next people, we're moving to me.
Yeah. So much for your eight o'clock somewhere, Charlie.
Yeah. Not overtime, I guess.